Welcome, recap. No thanks, just wanna get in.
Call this meeting to order. And I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Kirsty?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
JD?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, so we need to take a look at the brochure, I think, first.
Can you look, can you help me for a minute? Can you help me for a second?
Turn this off. So I did Gmail.
Does this every single time? And I do sound different.
All right. You sent us the agenda, didn't you?
Yes.
I know, I know you did.
I printed everything off that's on the agenda, so if that would make a difference.
I see. Got it here. Got the.
Thank you.
All right, so. Katie, do you wanna help us through this process?
Sure. Thank you all for having me again.
If you don't wanna stand, just pull up a chair.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Oh, yes, a hundred percent.
Okay. So the brochure is finalized, or it should be close to finalized, I guess, basically. I was just hoping you'd give it one last glance and let me know if there's any last minute changes that need to be made before we get this scheduled to go out. Like I said at the last meeting, we're gonna, as soon as we get the essay questions and application prepared, we're gonna get the application put together in our platform because of convention happening next week. We'll be busy and not on our computers, so we wanna make sure that it's ready to open on the seventeenth. So if you see anything on this that needs changed, we can get it changed in the next few days, otherwise, I just need your stamp of approval that you like what you see there.
I thought it looked good, I'm happy with what I see. I just had that one comment and it's been corrected, so I'm fine. I like that we have the application process. So when this goes out, is this just this part goes out as a brochure?
Great question. So the brochure will be included on the application itself, so when a candidate comes to our application site and finds the Kuna job posting, one of the first documents they'll see is a PDF link to this document where they can view it. Additionally, it will be included in all of our email communications that we send to superintendents in Idaho, our superintendent list that's about thirty-five-hundred people long from all across the country. I post it on my national superintendent searchers work alike group, so it gets shared out to quite a few places, as well as our website, you'll have a copy, so I would encourage you to post it on your website with your listing. Pretty much anywhere the listing is gonna be shared or posted, the brochure gets included.
Yeah, I like the pictures, I liked how we covered the community, and then I like the part of what they need to do the application process. So.
Something to think about, do you want it to close January thirty-first or January thirtieth, which is a Friday?
Oh, I, what does it, does it matter? I mean, we won't be here Saturday anyway, so if we say the thirtieth.
Well, it really doesn't matter, so how it works is it'll close typically unless the board recommends, otherwise, I have it close at midnight on the thirty-first. And then, so any applicants have until midnight to complete it, and then what I do is I'll go in in the morning and I, it takes like two seconds to check, and I just go in first thing in the morning, check and make sure that there were no candidates that were like in the process of completing the application. When the portal closed, sometimes that happens and it won't let them submit even though they were already in the process. It's very rare that happens, but it has happened a few times, so if it does, I get in contact with those candidates, but then otherwise, I will add all of you to our application portal itself and at eight AM the following day after it closes, so in this case, it would be February first, you'll receive an email notifying you that you now have access to be a screener, and at that point in time, you can start looking over the candidates.
So February first would be a Sunday, correct? I don't mind the closing the thirty-first at midnight just because it gives the timeline that we set, and most people are going to be doing it online, they're not dropping it in here at this place.
Well, and if they're working, that gives them Saturday too.
Correct, so I don't mind that, so I think we could keep it.
I'm okay with the thirty-first.
It just means that I don't want you working on a Sunday, though, to talk in everything.
I log in on my phone and all I look at is, is there any candidates that still say drafts that I didn't see on Friday?
And then you just click?
And then I just click and I send them an email, and that doesn't impair you all from looking at the applicants in the meantime. I'll send them an email and say, I noticed you still had a draft, are you wanting to submit your application?
Okay, I guess my question was, it's Sunday, do you wanna wait till Monday, but if you refine the Sunday, you're.
It's fine with me.
How do you guys feel about it?
Like I said, it's very rare that happens.
Most people haven't done it.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, do I have, do we need a motion to approve the brochure then? I need a motion to approve the brochure as it looks, or whatever you wanna say.
I assume move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so brochure is done, okay, timeline. So one of the reasons I was a little bit late, 'cause I had to run back and get my stuff, but you already had it, 'cause you're so good, so. On the timeline, I, we approved the timeline at one time and I'm happy with it as far as I know.
Yeah, and we, what, what if we change something?
I don't think we did change it from the first time that.
Other than we added this.
Yeah.
Thing changed.
Yeah. So basically, right now, we're doing this, and then the next thing will be November to January. We'll be putting it out, does it open up, when does it open up?
It'll open November seventeenth, which is the two months.
Oh, here it is, November seventeenth to January thirtieth, okay. And then.
And then is this to determine if we wanna buy a national online advertisement, what does that look like?
That would be, I haven't had to do that recently, that would, it's up to the board. There's some like online, you could post on Indeed or, you know, some online sites. There's also some online association of school administrators and things like that that we could pay for advertising there as well. I haven't found that it's felt necessary to post there. We like to keep that included, though, because if at any time you want to see more national candidates, we can do that quick and easy, so it's just an option there, but it's, right off the bat, it's not something I would recommend unless you really want a lot of national candidates. But we, like I said, we have an email list of thirty-five-hundred folks from all over the country and.
So you basically have a national list?
Yes, yeah.
That we don't have to pay for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what is the cost associated with doing something like that?
It differs from site to site, and I don't know them off the top of my head, just 'cause I, honestly, we don't do them very often, but I could get you that cost whenever you, if you decide that that's something you wanna think about.
I do see the application deadlines, January thirtieth, we need to change that to January thirty-first. And then, you might wanna put, you might wanna update, instead of February twenty-twenty-six, you wanna put February first, applications will be provided to the board.
Okay.
But not in executive session, that would probably be something you guys wanna do in February, at your February meeting, or do you wanna do it? How do most districts do it? Do they do a work session then, that first week of February, or do they wait till their board meeting the second Tuesday to take a look at applications and discuss an executive, what, usually?
I would, I would recommend that you do a special, like, work session, special meeting, just because it can take a few hours and it can be a long evening if you're doing it after your regular board meeting. And, yeah, so you'll have, you'll get access the day after the application closes, and then an ISBA, someone from ISBA will come in and assist you with reviewing those applications. We'll put together, you'll have the full applications, but we'll put together some applicant overviews where at that point, we review all of the applicants and note kind of anything that we want you to notice, like any kind of red flags about a candidate, or we're here to answer questions, if you do have out-of-state candidates, how their certificate transfers over, things like that, and we'll do a presentation for you. That's all done in executive session, the only thing that will be done in open session is before we move into executive session, we do like a hiring best practices in open meeting law, just quick refresher for the rest of the search and as you're getting ready to review applicants.
And then we go to executive session and do the rest of the meeting in executive session type thing. So thank you for making these calendars, Dean. Is that a time that maybe we should tentatively set now so that we can save that time, kind of keep it as a sacred, you know, type thing? And I, if, the second Tuesday is the tenth, so that'd be the regular board meeting, so I would think that first week in February, a date that you guys would like to.
I think the Thursday's.
Is that a good time?
Evening like this is probably the best.
Okay, how about for you guys?
That's fine.
Yeah, sure.
So then we're looking at February fifth at six o'clock.
It may not be myself who, I am very close to my due date at that point, but Ms. Vee or Jason will assist you.
Believe us in good hands, yes. So February fifth at six o'clock, and then it'll be open session, just going over things, and then most will be executive session. So that's done.
Any motion on that?
Okay, we need a motion to have a work session February fifth at six o'clock here at the district office to go over the applications. Need a motion for that?
I make a motion that on February fifth at six PM, we have a work session to go over applications.
Okay, go second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm aye also. Now, let's say we needed executive session on the tenth to go over things, is that might happen, or should I, I'm just thinking ahead and kinda in my head, no, usually this will be enough on the fifth?
It should be enough typically. What will happen is you'll go in, you'll review the applicants, and I would hope at that point, you feel pretty confident about the applicants that you wanna move forward to some next round, either whether that's a semifinalist round or you just have a few candidates that you really are excited about and wanna move straight to a finalist round. It would be pretty rare that you would need a meeting on the tenth, unless that's when you wanted to do like a semifinalist like Zoom interview type situation, but again, it's hard to know something like that until you see.
So basically, from, at the fifth, we're gonna probably narrow down our applicants to possibly three or whatever we decide, and then from there, I would like some community involvement too, or open app type, where they can come and hear them before we make the final decision. Is that usually how it's done, or what, how does it work?
Absolutely, yeah, so typically, once you get to your finalist, I would say three to four max, that's when you, that's when I would recommend you bring them in, if you do have enough candidates that you maybe wanna do like Zoom, like middle interviews and narrow them down even further, I would recommend doing those on Zoom only because it's hard to ask candidates who may not live in the valley to come down twice in a short amount of time to do interviews, but once you get to the finalist round, typically how it works is it's a day to two-day affair, depending on how you wanna set it up, and you'll bring candidates in, I would recommend you have them tour your district, show them around, meet with staff and teachers and whoever you wanna have them meet with, we've done like the transportation department and things like that before, and then you'll wanna do some kind of forum, so it could be as simple as one forum or you bring everyone in, it can be you do a staff and teacher forum and then a community forum, back-to-back, it can be as you're touring the district, maybe you have certain groups, the district office staff, the transportation department, the food services department, and as you're going around, they have short, like fifteen to thirty-minute meetings with those folks as well, so we can really make the schedule whatever you think fits.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I would recommend it be no longer than two days, and at some point in that time, you'll wanna interview them.
Okay, I guess, so when we narrow it down to three or four, is that something we do and then we interview them and then narrow it to two from there, or, and then that's when we open it up to what other people think? Is that correct, or is that?
That, it's up to you guys on how you kinda wanna do that process typically with the searches. I typically have two to three candidates in most searches I do when they get to the finalist round, they bring all of them in and they'll do the community forum, like meet and greets, you know, however you wanna set up that community piece, at the same time, interview the candidates, and then most of the time, they feel ready to make a decision at that point.
Oh, so they don't narrow it down, they just do one?
They just do one, one interview and.
That's usually a couple days.
Yeah.
Gotcha now. It's really up to you guys what you wanna do, so.
I think, you know, when we get to that February fifth meeting, we can kinda figure out. My thought would be, I don't know, it depends on how many applicants and stuff like we have, but I don't know, you have like a semifinalist and then you would narrow it down, do like Zoom interviews and stuff after that February fifth, and then we pick the two or three, kinda what I.
I would definitely recommend not setting too narrow of guidelines for yourselves this far out just because you haven't seen applicants yet, you don't know who you've got. You might have a better understanding, yeah.
We hope not, but.
I hope not.
So in other words, I think your recommendation I'm hearing is do the February fifth and then set it up from there, after you see what you have.
Yep.
All right, so then we'll move, so is there anything else on the timeline then that we need to set right now?
I don't think so, this is a good starting date, and then after every meeting, we'll kind of guide you on what we would recommend for the next steps based on what your decision is with candidates.
And you're saying, unfortunately, it just depends on what applicants we get?
Yeah.
Hate to say this, but what if we don't like any of the applicants then?
That shouldn't be a problem.
And Kim has to stay.
Yeah. I guess Kim will stay. She's been good. Okay, so do I have a motion that we accept the timeline as is right now?
Very good though.
Yeah, maybe we didn't.
Oh, did we? Okay, then we're done. I didn't realize we'd done that. Okay, so then, application template, next. Is this usually what they do, this is a very.
So most of the questions on this are ones required by law or that our attorneys have told us we should probably include. Really, the only thing you will need to make a decision on for the application is if you want essay questions you wanna include, and then if there's any other kinds of questions that you maybe want, but this is, our attorneys look at it and this is what they kinda say is the standard.
Okay, so I see two references, that's all they need?
They'll, they have, so this is difficult because it's a printed-out copy, the online version allows them to include as many references as they would like.
So do we say we want at least two then, is that kinda, well, they?
I think if I remember correctly, the application requires at least three, so I just wanted to put these in here so you could see them.
Okay, and what does files mean on number seven?
Files, yes, that's where they'll attach their license, their superintendent certificate, their transcripts, their cover letter, their resume. Sometimes they'll submit, you know, like a presentation, any kind of document that they wanna submit to support their application is what goes there. Sometimes I've had people who have had PSC issues before and.
What's the standard?
The Professional Standards Commission or Committee.
I figured standards.
Yes. And they've put kind of their explanation of why they were sent there, so it's kinda just the collect-all of all the files we ask for them to submit. And then another file that will be there that's required by Idaho code is their past job performance form, so what that does is they fill out all of their past school districts they've worked at with a contact information so that the district can go and request their files from that district.
Okay, and then we have the essay questions down here.
And the essay questions, I believe, that are in this sample are just example ones from a past search I've done, those aren't the ones that I'm necessarily recommending, I just wanted to show you.
You're not gonna die on that hill, huh?
I have no, no strong feelings.
How many essay questions are typical on the application?
I would typically recommend two to three, I've seen districts do more than that. I think two to three's a solid number to ask of candidates, and to be candid, in today's world of AI, it's become a little more of something where it's harder to tell who's written it themselves, although I do try and check it against AI and I have, I was just telling someone recently, last year when I was conducting searches, I had candidates who were applying for two separate positions and there's the same essay question on both jobs and they've answered exactly the same way and you could tell it was an AI question, so it's becoming more common, but I still like to include them because you can learn a lot about someone through their essay questions, I've had candidates who don't answer them fully, don't use full sentences, write one sentence, sometimes they don't even spell the word out all the way, so it gives you kind of a good introduction to who you may be.
Yeah, so I was reading these questions, and I think they're all, they're all good, but one of them that I was thinking has to do with HR and community involvement, especially with bonds and levies. I kinda like, and student achievement is great, but I know that the team would work on student achievement, but I would like to, this is my personal, I'd like to know how they are with the community, their communities, and what they do with HR, because it seems like we have a lot of HR issues and community, bonds and levies, so I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I would almost take out the one about the achievement, I think most superintendents are, know that they wanna do achievement and leave that up to their staff to make sure that they're doing that achievement, and up to the board to make sure that they set those goals for the achievement, but I would really like to know how are they with community, how they do with their community, how they are with HR and working with people.
I think that would be a good question.
So, and I don't know how to put that, I'm not really good at that part. So, I don't know.
It's ChatGPT.
Yeah, ChatGPT, and what are you doing in your community to? Involvement, yeah, I just think for this community, I think that, that involvement is so important.
Well, on our survey, there was a lot of, some of that was on that.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you, how would you work with the community and, and we've had many failed bonds and levies, how would you, what would be your goal or what do you?
Yeah.
I like that.
Those, those are, that's.
I'm not sure how to ask that.
I'm, I'm neither of it.
Number one and number five.
Oh, you looked at something else.
No, the questions, the guys were asking.
That's these right here, essay questions, and then that is, those are more possible. This might be stuff you do in the interview.
We have another list of, that are for interview questions, and those ones are broken down by topic, I was just going through the like overview document I put of the surveys and I did find one question that might be on track to what you're looking for that someone suggested, and it was, how will you build trust in open communication across all levels of the district, student, staff, and the community?
That's it?
Yeah.
That labels it, me, that's it.
I was gonna say, I knew there was something on the answer, more people were answering questions.
Yeah, so you're saying that we should only have three to four questions, 'cause there's a bunch back here that JD's saying.
Yeah, so that sheet that I've provided you is just a list of examples to help get you thinking, I wouldn't recommend. Yeah, so that, that sheet that I've provided you is just a list of examples to help get you thinking, I wouldn't recommend doing more than about three to four. Um, but that list is just to help you pick some based on maybe what is important to you at the moment.
You know, along with that community, can we, can we stick in how they get along with their board?
There's, there's question, yeah.
Yeah, cuz it's here, but I, since we can only do three, I'm thinking, put the.
We'll pick three or four, just, I mean, is that what we're trying to accomplish right now?
Right, well, we were looking at these right here, or I was looking at the ones prior to this. Gosh, right here. What are three greatest challenges facing school superintendents today? Describe your experience with educational leadership and curriculum.
This, I think this section is here.
Yeah, and then, then instead of this achievement one, I was gonna take it out and do one with the, how do you communicate along with community, HR, you know? And even like the board, how you get along with your board, what are some things that?
Yeah, we can add board to.
That one question.
The, we can just, so it would say, how will you build trust and open, open communication across all levels of the district? The board, student, staff and the community.
I think that's great.
Okay.
And I, and I don't know about transparency, but that is the number one thing I saw a lot. That, that's the key word nowadays, transparency about.
What does transparency mean to you as a superintendent?
Yeah, there you go, that might be something.
Well, if you wanna ask bonds and levies.
Face to face.
Third question.
What's that Kirsty?
Questions you can ask about bonds and levies.
Yeah, I think that, describe your fiscal management style, describe your experience with budget preparation and management, I think you could put in bonds and levies there too. That's the fourth one.
Oh, that one, okay.
And then just stick in bonds and levies, yeah.
So stick in bonds and levies to the.
Yeah, because that's something, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
It's not a fun thing.
So does that just leave two questions then?
That's four, unless you guys wanted to.
Well, unless we don't wanna do these ones.
Yeah, exactly.
We wanna do two different ones here.
I did like the three greatest challenges facing school superintendents today, I do like that.
That's a good one.
Yeah, because I wanna know what their thoughts are, what do they?
I do think it's important to understand their educational.
Yep. I like this one.
Does that work for you JD?
That's fine.
And then some of these questions JD, I think would be whatever she had too, would be your face to face. Questions.
Well, the two that I circled were covered and what you guys, the other questions.
So you're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, she said you, you have other questions too that we can ask.
When we, when you get a little further along and you're ready to actually interview, we have like, I think it's. Four or five pages and it's broken out into like subject matters, so student achievement, um, like staff. Oversight, you know, what, a budget, it's broken out into all kinds of topics that.
More detailed.
Yes, yeah, so, and I recommend that you at least touch on one of each and then. I'd also again, remember to keep looking back at your survey results.
Definitely.
Yeah, be sure you're pulling from there too.
Do you like, uh, what was it? Tacos or what?
Sushi.
Sushi.
Sushi taco.
Taco, would you rather like tacos or sushi?
Sushi.
I, I think we should ask that.
I think it's a great question, it might, it might show you what kinda person they are.
It's true.
Are you a fish eater or are you, do you like the Mexican food here in Kuna? Anyway, yeah, I, is there anything else, cuz I think that's basically, are we happy with the essay questions then?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the essay questions and the application as we've discussed?
I shall move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah.
All right, Kirsty.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
JD.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so.
And do they have a March calendar, is there anything that we need to put on it, or just wait till February?
I would probably wait until your February meeting, I just, I don't want you to get too many dates on the calendar, too early.
Hey, we're, I, your expertise is what I'm leaning on, so we know that, you've been through this a few times, so.
Things change pretty quick once you see applications and you may not wanna move faster.
I, the one question I do have is, did I see salary on here? Is that something we have to put? I, I don't think I did, but I don't know if we need to put them on, I don't think it was on here.
I don't see a salary on it.
Is that something most people put, like a, like a?
Like a range?
A range?
I would probably recommend including range, just, um.
Is that in the application process or should that be in the brochure?
We ta- we can include, we would include it in the brochure itself, so, um, if you have a range in mind, you can let me know.
Is that something we should discuss in executive session, or is that?
It has to be done in open session, yeah.
So.
Well, we already discussed it.
I thought we had, like from last year.
We did, but I don't remember what it is, so if you wanna bring it up.
I think it was like one sixty-nine or one fifty-nine.
One fifty to one seventy?
I think it was something like that.
But I couldn't remember the exact, do you remember?
Yeah, I mean, you get a fifty thousand dollar range in there, good.
And it's negligible.
Well, of course it is, depending on your, their expertise and experience.
I remember this conversation.
We had this conversation, but I don't.
We had it several times, so I think that's the range that we discussed.
One, what was it?
One fifty to one seventy and obviously it's negligible. Pick up for discussion.
Does that put us in the ballpark, I, I kinda wanna know where.
Thought that was without.
It seems like we looked at, I, I remember doing research now on all of the ones around us.
I remember bringing you some comparisons, yes, I do remember this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I remember doing research on it, yes. It's coming to me now.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm fine with it.
What are we paying Kim? I don't remember, is that open? I wanna make sure that.
Uh, we, I thought we did say it in the open, but.
Yeah, okay.
It wasn't.
What's that?
It wasn't open special.
Was it one, I, I don't remember, so.
Forty-nine.
Okay, so it's one, so that, we're good, okay.
I would say this is a good range for you guys, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so do I need to change now, uh, the brochure and make that a added?
Just make a motion to add the salary. Wherever you think it needs to go, it's fine.
We have a, it'll probably be, just so you know, um, we'll probably include it.
In the application process?
Yeah, it'll probably be a little, its own little section and we'll include it like right under these photos here.
Okay, okay, so do I have a?
A motion that we add the salary range on the application.
Okay, second?
A second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, Kirsty.
Aye.
And Michael.
Aye.
And JD.
Aye.
And I'm aye. I think, that's all I, I'm trying to think about everything, anybody else have anything or that they can think of?
I make a motion to return.
Second. Any other discussion? Kirsty?
I'm gonna aye.
Okay, Michael.
Aye.
JD. And I'm aye. Is this meeting, was this meeting, uh. Taped or video, okay, so that I could have. Yeah, I figured it was, but I just double checked so that I could have Freddie.
Yeah, he just texted me and said if we were still going, I said no worries about that.
Yeah, okay.
And then I turned.
That was really good of you, saying, now you can text him back and say, done. So anyway, um, yeah, then I'll just recommend that he take a look. Yeah, that.
I can film it too.
Yeah. So that'll work. That's our new board member.
Yeah, and when he gets on the board, I'm happy to meet with him too and just help guide him through.
Yeah.
The starting process of this, since.
That's kinda what I wanted to print tonight, so he could kinda see, but I think, I think he'll do fine.